Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Would you please rise and join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the August 9th school board meeting of the school calipede Speedway. We are following a printed agenda posted in the back of the room. There will be sixteen items tonight. Item number one is to approve the minutes of July 12th.
I'm going to approve the minutes on the last meeting.
Thank you Laura. Thank you Luke. We've moved in second and any comments? All in favor? Motion carries for zero. Mr. Borum, just a heads up, you're up next, so as soon as we get these signed, we're going to be looking to you.
You can make a couple extra rows next year.
I see thirty-three people here that's in room's capacity.
Minutes are signed.
Alright, item two is report of advanced placement testing 2016. Mr. Borum.
Good evening. It's an honor to stand before our senior board, central office leadership, teachers and parents to recognize our students who have earned a qualifying score of three, four, or five on an AP exam. I would be remiss not to first give you a brief history of our AP program and the enormous strides that we have made over the past five or six years. As you may know, advanced placement courses are college level courses offered at the high school. The AP courses reflect what is taught in a top introductory college course. Students take AP exams at the end of that course in May measuring their mastery of college level work. A score of three or higher on an AP exam can typically earn students college credits and/or placement into advanced courses in college. To kind of give you some perspective, in 2010, we had three AP courses, and those three AP courses were English Language, Calculus AB, and Biology. And we administered twenty-one AP exams to only fifteen students. We compare that to May 2016, we had a total of twelve AP courses, art history, English language composition, English literature and composition, US government, US history, calc, stats, biology, chemistry, physics one, physics two, and Spanish language and culture. And we administered a total of two hundred and sixty-one exams to a hundred and thirty-three students. Now again, let me give you some perspective of that. Please keep in mind that the cohort grades ten through twelve were the only students eligible to take an AP exam in May of 2016. That was a total of three hundred and thirty-six kids. If we were to divide the hundred and thirty-three students who took an AP exam, that is forty percent of our student body who took an AP course and took their subsequent AP exam. For the current school year, 2016-17, we have also added three additional AP courses. Those AP courses are AP microecon, AP environmental science, as well as the first ever freshman AP course for our student body, AP world history. This year, 2016-17, we have a total of two hundred and fifteen students taking an AP course on an AP exam. That is almost half our student body. So, I just wanted to again, give you some perspective of where we've come over the past five or six years. To recognize our students that are here tonight, we had forty-five students earn a qualifying score. And I say forty-five with an asterisk because at the end of today, the school day today, college board sent an additional report for Spanish because that was a late scoring test because there was a defect with the CD. And some of my kids here may remember that defect. But several schools had to take the late AP Spanish exam, which caused that test to be scored later than the other exams. So out of these, we had six students earn an AP, a qualifying score on an AP Spanish exam out of the eight students who took the exam. So congratulations to those students as well. Yes, absolutely. Tonight, and again, I want to make sure I don't take too much time, we are recognizing our students who earned a qualifying exam. And not only are we recognizing you, you will actually receive the incentive. As you may know, we are part, we were a part, we're part of the AP Tippin Grant, known now as an affiliate school through the National Math and Science Initiative. And we were part of that grant for three years. And the whole philosophy behind that grant was to give open access to our students to take AP exams without prerequisites, without a lot of the loopholes or hurdles that students had to go through to take an AP course. So the whole philosophy is open access and then giving those students the proper resources and support to be successful in those classes. This is kudos to our teachers who put on morning and afternoon study tables. We have Saturday sessions that our students have, still have access with through the AP grant, AP Tippin Grant. And the other piece of that, our school, our board, our central office, has always been invested from the very beginning, giving our students a hundred dollar incentive for every qualifying score that they earn. So in short, a student made, that takes multiple AP classes, and we have some sitting in this audience today, this evening, if they earn five qualifying scores on an AP exam, they earn a mini scholarship. That will essentially add up to five hundred dollars. So again, kudos to every student sitting here. Thank you to this community for their continued support. Thank you to the teachers. And again, congratulations students. I'll begin with any questions that you may have, and I have checks as well as a picture that we're going to take following this presentation. So we'll be going outside and we'll take the picture right here out by the glass doors, and you'll be free to go on with the rest of reading. Any questions?
Was your fifty-one, forty-five plus the six, is that students?
Yes. What we have really tried to impress upon our faculty is not the amount of qualifying scores, because you can have one student pass seven, earn seven qualifying scores, which could drastically skew your statistics or skew your numbers. We're really trying to focus on individual students earning qualifying scores. So those are forty-five individual students who have earned a qualifying score, and it's actually forty-seven because those six that earned the qualifying score for Spanish, five of, four of them already had other qualifying scores. We had two additional students to add to the forty-five to make that a total of forty-seven. And that also took our total qualifying exams to ninety-five overall of the two hundred and sixty-one.
Great question. Mr. Smith.
I don't speak for the board when I say this, Mr. Borum, but this is my assessment of this. This began with this man saying we need to have greater rigor here at the school. It then went to teachers. Some of them are back here, some of my favorite people when I was here are back here now. It wouldn't happen without great teachers.
Right.
But the results are you up here in the front. It wouldn't happen without students who are willing to challenge themselves and say, "I want to try something harder than what other kids are doing." And so kudos to you as well. So to me, it's a three-piece puzzle. Here, the teachers back here, maybe a fourth piece, the parents who are here who wouldn't help without maybe some encouragement from parents, but certainly congratulations to you students who have done this.
We will be putting up quotes around the school from past graduates. Some of you may have given a quote to encourage other students to take AP exams. And what the consensus from all the students, from when you read the various quotes, is that it is challenging, they do have to learn how to manage their time if they're in the musical, or in athletics, or in other extracurricular activities, but it has paid huge dividends for them in terms of preparing them for college, preparing them for the rigor that they will face once they enter school, as well as learning how to juggle and manage their time with academic rigor, as well as having an outside academic life. So again, yes, kudos to everyone you mentioned. It wouldn't happen without the support from Mr. Hall, our community, our parents, and as well, our students who are dedicated to being resilient even when they don't, we're talking with kids who, a lot of these students who are used to earning As and may not have gotten an A on that first paper or that first exam, but you stuck with it, you met with your teachers, you did what was necessary to be successful, and that's why you're sitting here tonight.
Another question. You talked about there being a freshman AP class, and that's world history, and that's a new class?
That is a new class for our school. Obviously, AP world history has been around. Larger school districts have often offered AP world history. My daughter took that as a freshman at her school, but we did not have that at our school. Our first freshman AP course for students, underclassmen students, was the AP US history. So this year, we have implemented the AP world history. And at our open house that we had last week, we had a AP parent meeting, and Mrs. Baker, the AP world history, met with parents of the AP world history class to kind of give them information on how she's structuring her class, to support some resources that she has in place, because these are freshman students entering into high school that may not have seen this type of rigor before. And I think what is unprecedented is the school our size that is offering this level of AP courses. Fourteen AP courses for a school of five hundred students. I doubt you would find that anywhere else in Indiana, offering that many AP courses. So we want to make sure that we have the support and resources in place to help those students be successful.
Does that world history class just fit into the normal progression of classes? So that would be, so students starting as freshmen now would effectively have one more AP class that they would add to their portfolio?
Yes, and actually, what we did from the social studies perspective, that progression actually happens freshman year as well as junior year. So a freshman student taking an AP world history class as a tenth grader would take AP US history. As a junior, we still have that currently as just psychology and current issues, but as a senior, they have the option of US, AP US government, as well as AP microeconomics. So yeah, we still keep a space in there, but we have a AP course for every social studies course that we offer here.
About three points. You mentioned that a hundred dollar incentive is not a scholarship. The scholarship is, every one of these courses is equivalent of one college course. At Indiana, that's about a thousand dollars. At a place like Notre Dame, it's about three thousand dollars. We have students who are graduating with their freshman year complete because of AP. That's a scholarship that means something. Second, eleven sophomores passed an AP class this year. The first year it was three, I believe. That means our sophomores and what we, so now I look at these eleven, I expect those eleven kids to go on to pass seven or eight by the time they're out of here. That's why we're starting with freshmen. It'll be interesting to see how many our freshmen can pass. It may be only one or two, but that brings up the third point. Taking an AP class and taking the exam, and we started to this with the University of Notre Dame five years ago, and they told us the real secret is in taking the course and taking the test. Freshmen in college who take an AP class and take a course overall have a GPA of a half a point higher than other students on average. So every student that's taken one of these courses has done something that predicts college success. And so finally, fourth, the one thing I'm going to tell parents of the underclassmen, your child falling asleep with their physics book on their pillow is okay. They ought to be working that hard. It's a lot better than what they're listening to on their phone. So keep them coming to class. They will be better for it. And while somebody gives me credit, there's no credit here. The bottom line is, it doesn't happen without, because I still remember six years ago when I had this conversation with parents for the first time, and I said, "Your kids aren't working hard enough." That wasn't real popular, but many of those same parents have come back and said, "Our kids weren't working hard enough." I kind of feel like they are. Kind of. We can do more, so let's do more. Thanks, Mr. Borum.
Thank you.
And you're the money man, so take people out in the hallway and enjoy.
Although the Spanish students, we don't have you. No, the Spanish students. The Spanish students, I've already updated the spreadsheet, and you will have that tomorrow.
The faculty, it'll be the nineteenth. Thank you, everybody.
Alright, thank you.
You guys really should cheer for yourselves, you're great. There is nowhere else, there is no school our size that has this. They were in the middle. I was next to the window. Yeah, I'm fine. Let's talk classrooms, Mr. President. What's number two?
Item three is construction project update.
And today, we're honored to have the presence of Ms. Heather Halbert. She is Mr. Martin Truitt's colleague and associate working on our project. What she has for us today are some initial drawings that she's just shared with us. She's been working diligently on this. Martin is out of town today, so Ms. Halbert, tell us a little bit about where we're going and where we're heading. You're welcome to use the podium. Are your drawings okay, if you'd like? I think we could get it up on the screen, but not more than that. Heather, please. We promise we are.
I'll start there. So what you're looking at for the sheet marked LS1 is the overall building, Wheeler Elementary, and that kind of darker portion over to the side is where the new proposed classrooms will be. The two on that part, the two empty spaces on the top are the two additional classrooms, and then on the bottom is the toilet rooms. So that's coming off of that corridor at the end of the hallway. We have enough room there to fit those classrooms in on the, it's grass right now before we get to the driveway. If you look at the second page, the A101, that gives you a much more detailed look at what, and this is really tiny, but we're looking at it, you know, this big in the office. So I've got first, number one is our demo plan. We've got really minor demolition that'll have to happen here, just a couple doors and filling in a window. And then on number two there, the first floor plan, you can see roughly the overall dimensions of that are about fifty-six feet off of the end of the building. And then number three is the ceiling plan, so if you're laying on your back looking up, that's just one of the parts that we're going to move into with the construction documents as we keep working through it. And number four is our enlarged plan, where we've focused a lot of our attention at this point right now, is the enlarged toilet rooms. Mr. Hall had a lot to say about getting really private restrooms that also are able to be well secured for supervision of teachers, but also have a lot of privacy for individual students. So there's a lot of thought and planning that's gone into those, and I think they're starting to really develop and work well for both parties, for the users and the teachers who need to make sure that they have a lot of supervision without getting into anyone's privacy areas. So you can kind of see that enlarged there in number four. I'm also going to talk about schedule and budget, but I could answer some questions right now about the plans if you want to, or I can jump on over to schedule.
I just have one question. The two stalls in the middle, those are handicap?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why they're bigger than the other ones. And actually, with having six stalls, we have to also have an ambulatory stall, which is where you have the two bars on either side. So one of those stalls across from the handicap on either side is ambulatory as well, which is a little challenging to tell from that picture there.
Take silence as support. Tell us about the schedule. Can this be done by Halloween?
It can. I can be done with my drawings by Halloween, but we can't have it built for you by Halloween. We're looking at revised schedule. If you jump ahead, we're already at August 9th, so today reviewing schedule and budget. Then by August 23rd, we'll have the design really underway. Lots of progress going on. Can update board at that point if you'd like. At September 13th, our construction documents should be complete so that you can, permission to advertise bids. So at your board meeting that night, we'll want to start advertising bids. And then we give ourselves a little bit of time, and then we'll do the second advertisement of bids on September 23rd. There'll be a contractors meeting in there, and by October 8th, then we'll receive the bids. So hopefully by Halloween, we will start, maybe we'll have broken ground by Halloween. That would, that would be a good shot by there. And we're all basing this on wanting to try to get the building dry, the shell of the building done before the ground gets too hard. We're trying to get it all done on the outside, and then we'll be able to work over Christmas break, and we'll be able to get the building done hopefully sometime in February, but we don't have a really good firm date yet on a final until we get a little farther into it and see how the construction goes. Any questions on the schedule?
So you've gotten a little closer on the budget. What do you think?
We have worked with a little-
I'll stop you. If you remember, our initial information suggested a range of anywhere from six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to just about one point one million. Now that's a pretty wide range, so I've asked them to see as they've worked on this if they might, we have budgeted for that, the high end, but what are you thinking? And nobody's holding.
We're thinking closer to the low end. We've worked with some local contractors, showed them where we're at right now, and they've, they've felt like with the way plans are drawn up very economically, we're looking at the lower end of that. Maybe, don't quote me on it, don't hold me to it. We didn't have any casework in that. But that, they, they're definitely saying low end on that. So closer to maybe the seven hundred thousand instead of the one million.
One of the things that would help the architect begin is, the direction I've essentially given them is that we will want to build classrooms that in terms of fit, finish, VA tile, where we want terrazzo floors in the hallways, cabinetry, sinks in the classrooms to be similar. We want these rooms to be similar to what we have at, we are understanding that you don't put nineteen fifty-nine in in 2016, but do you have any, you know, we typically in an elementary school use concrete block walls that we finish with epoxy paint. That's very economical, but I'm hesitant to create something that's different than the standard across the district.
Just looking at Wheeler and having gone through it, their existing classrooms do have a lot of casework, and they have quite a bit compared to some of maybe the really low budget where we'll do next to no storage and cabinetry. So they have a nice amount, and we'll try to match that affordably, but we can look at the numbers and see if we need to make decisions based on that.
I think it would be very safe to say for here in Speedway, as you can tell, we build things to last. We don't build them extravagantly, but we do build with the best quality materials, and I mean, we expect our casework to work for fifty years.
Oh, absolutely, for sure.
So that's not an area that we want to-
We wouldn't cut corners on quality.
We want the highest quality, we just don't, we don't, we don't want carpet in classrooms.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no, absolutely not. I mean, the finishes at Wheeler are concrete block, and they had VCT on the floors, which is like the vinyl tile, but terrazzo in the hallway, and so those are the things that we're estimating on right now, based on what the current school has. Sounds good.
What are questions you have? What can we give, what information can we give you that will help you move forward?
At this point, I feel like we have a lot of pieces that we're waiting on just from the site point of view, so we're probably not looking at the board holding us up at all. We're just waiting for our site survey to come back finished, because you did order that.
Let me, we, when we add these two classrooms on, we reduce the amount of groundwater drainage, and as you know, groundwater drainage is important here. So we've asked the town and professional surveys to both survey the land to make sure we're okay on elevations, as well as if we have to do any drainage work. If we do have to do drainage work, we do have the funds to do it, but we'll meet whatever standard our town wants. Last thing we want to do is build something that floods our own park.
And right now, ninety percent, we aren't going to have to do anything in terms of drainage. But again, we don't want to move too far ahead of ourselves and then have to take ten steps back.
But I've assured the architects that we will do whatever makes, whatever standard our community has. We're a part of this community, and we won't, if they say we do need some drainage work, we'll do it. We're not going to contest that.
Thank you.
Thank you Heather. Now, as much as, you're welcome to stay for the next two hours. I would encourage you to go out and see those high school kids, they're probably enjoying themselves.
Thank you.
Item four, recognize a four-star school.
I'll turn this one over to Ms. Bock.
Great. Well, tonight, we want to recognize Speedway's Junior High School for achieving four-star status. This is based on the 2015 I-Step scores in the state of Indiana. They are the ones who award the four-star. Just a quick review of how they measure it. They take the percentage of students who pass the English Language Arts, the percentage of students who pass the math, and add that together. That's one of the stars. You have to be an A school. The students that you measure with are the students who have been there a hundred and sixty-two days. And then you also take the percentage of passing that passed both the Language Arts and the math, which may not be the same students, all of them wouldn't quite be the same as the previous measurement. And then you also have to have ninety-five percent participation. So of that, every year, it's a different number that the state awards. They take all of those and rank them, and then take the top twenty-five percent, and that's how they determine. Then if there are some private schools or charter schools, they can be added into the number of schools that are recognized. So this year, based on the criteria that I just gave you, there, the cut scores that junior high met actually exceeded those cut scores. So there were two hundred and eighty-seven schools in the state of Indiana that were recognized as four-star. And of those two hundred and eighty-seven, eighteen percent of those were junior high and middle schools. So kudos to our, it's not an easy thing to do. And obviously, John and Rick will say, "Oh, it's because of this, this, or this." All those things do attribute to it. We work hard as a district, and the junior high passes on great high achieving kids as recognized by all the seniors, high kids we just recognized. But kudos to the junior high for their four-star status. So with that, we have an award for you.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Come on up to the podium, guys. What would you say about this? We're interested in your observations about your school. You're interested about what you saw before this and how you prepare those kids. This is your audience, you have fourteen seconds.
Well, I think it's pretty obvious that we have a great assistant principal. We have a great staff. I think that's key, great staff. We have parents who are extremely supportive. Language and math teachers are just, they just kick butt every day. They really, if you walk by those classrooms every day, you don't see them watching movies, you don't see them playing games. They're doing stuff every day, and I think that's, you know, that's the difference, that they go work every day. And we lost one of the good ones to the high school. Liz Geisting did a great job with our kids, but I think we have found a guy that will be, will be very good for us also. So it's not just one thing. I wish you could say it's just one thing, but it's not. It's several pieces of the puzzle.
Well, I would say that we have a great principal, and it does start at the top, but even with you guys, it starts with you guys and trickles down. But his leadership and his expectations, he gives the kids expectations, but the staff knows the expectations too, and he requires them to live up to those, and we see fit that, you know, by visiting all the time the classrooms and going in and talking to them and observing them like we were doing today already, you know, they follow those expectations. And so it's set at the top, and then they just, teachers work their tails off, like you said. One last, though, we did lose some quality teachers for us three, I mean, major, is big for a staff our size. But I've been around, and I know John's been around, and wow, future looks great. And I think we have three great hires, they're working hard, and I'm anxious to see these scores even go higher. So thanks for your recognition, your support. We'll continue to do our best. We'll continue to do our best for you.
So, you know, you pick up some, some additional language arts and math, but you also pick up assistance in reading and ESL now. Are those, I mean, straight, are those valuable to what you're doing and the improvement you're making?
Absolutely. All you have to do is drive through the shopping center to see our talent's changing. Our demographics are changing, our kids are changing. What's not changing, though, is the work ethic of our staff, you know? Our, having an ESL person in there that helps those kids is going to be, it's going to be invaluable. Having somebody to teach reading. We were one of the first junior highs ever to do that, I think. You know, I thank Ken for that. But, you know, we recognize that we get a lot of kids that can't read at grade level and then we expect them to pass the test. And no one ever thought about teaching reading to junior high kids, and so they were supposed to read. When we implemented that, it's, it's paid as an evidence. It's, you know, it's helping tremendously to our kids that are coming in that aren't reading at grade level. So, you know, there's, like I said, it's not one piece. There's several parts of this thing that helps, but those two things are definitely beneficial.
Picking back off of the reading specials, that was one of the classes I was in for full observation today. And it's, you know, it's amazing what she's done with those kids. They can just see it, and she's got statistics to back it up. The kids are coming in two and three grade levels below and they're moving, they're all moving up. And like I told her when we met for our post-meeting, you know, she's not, she doesn't have the high one stretching them. She's got medium as high for her and then low, but they're all gradually going up. And it's amazing to see what she's doing with those reading skills, so.
Yeah. When I said the thing about the demographic, is I don't, I use that as an excuse. I don't think you ever change your expectations. I don't ever think you think, no matter what comes through those doors, you're going to walk out. And I said this to the staff this year, and I said it sixteen years ago when I first walked through the door, that-
Sixteen?
One of the things that they, maybe it's fifteen.
No, it's sixteen. I mean, principals don't stay in one place for sixteen years.
Yeah, I said that, you know, one of the things that made this, this building unique was they kind of expect to be a four-star school. And it's not like, when I mentioned four-star status to some other places I've been, they didn't even know what it was. They didn't even know what four-star was. You really, you'd have to explain what that was. When I came to Speedway, four-star was like, yeah, we're going to make four-star. We got to make four-star. I mean, it's, it's the expectation that they're going to get them. And if they don't, they feel like they've not done their job. So, you know, it's, all I got to do is guide the ship a little bit and tell them which way to go and provide the support again. They just work hard every day.
Any questions? Otherwise, Ms. Bach, now, will you get in front of them?
The award that we use for that is called the Star Polisher. And I think John spoke about that. As he said, you know, it's each child and what we do every day. And if you go in their office, they're probably going to have to add a shelf because there are numerous Star Polishers in their office. But tonight, we have your award. It's engraved with your name on it and it recognizes you for the four-star school award for Speedway Junior High School. You want to come up and receive your award?
These are ours.
And you might want to use two hands.
Oh.
John Disney, congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Awesome. Things keep getting harder and harder. We appreciate it. Appreciate the recognition.
Well, perhaps the best thing I can do for you at this point is let you know that it's time to go.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Item five is two thousand sixteen enrollment update.
Yes, since Ms. Bach's in the back, I'll, you have the latest spreadsheet in blue. If you look at the white one that you originally had, that was from the third of August at twelve forty-nine in the afternoon. You can see now that six days later, we've gained forty-one students, I believe. From the first day of school, we gained a hundred and twenty students. It's been a challenge getting all the students enrolled. Our average at the elementary is about nineteen students in a class. At the junior high, sixteen and a half. And at the high school, seventeen and a half. As we look at this, we have areas of concern, but I'm not sure I have great solutions. We have, in the fifth and sixth grades, our, our philosophy, when I say our, I essentially mean my philosophy, is that we divide classes as low as we can, thinking that the sooner we can help them with the reading, the better. And the longer they're in our schools, the better able, they're able to handle large groups. And so while we have some classes of twenty-six and one of twenty-seven, we're confident in the teachers. We're going to move forward with putting a teacher assistant in each of those rooms to have an extra set of hands and eyes. We literally don't have a room at one building and finding some way to be equitable. We may well look at, we're watching closely first grade at Allison Elementary because we may need to look at a third section there. We do have a room there, but again, that's at first grade. What I will say is, my sense is that this is the highest the number will be, seven seventy, seventeen seventy. I think it'll be more like seventeen fifty or seventeen forty on count day. The good news is that the budget was built on seventeen hundred, so we'll have more revenue from the state than expected. The challenging news is I may ask, have to ask you to do an additional appropriation to pay for these assistants. Now, additional appropriation simply means we have the funds, we just didn't know we were going to need them for assistance. And so we may need to move some money from classroom teacher secondary to teacher assistance elementary. That'll take an action by you probably in November, and then I'll need to go to the town council in December. But I, I think they'll be a hundred percent on board, understanding this is not new money. This is just getting it in the right place. But we have a plan. We know where we're heading and we're working diligently to get there. Ms. Bach, I, I kind of took that report from you, but is there anything I didn't, I didn't say that you need to say?
Yeah, covered it well.
All right. Item six is to conduct a public hearing on the two thousand seventeen Capital Projects Plan.
And we, we went through the plan in detail last week, so you're well informed, Mr. President. I believe your job is to open up for public comments and then seeing, close the hearing when you feel like you've given an appropriate amount of time.
All right. They, we're open for any comments. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on the Capital Projects Plan. Item seven is to present the two thousand seventeen school budget.
Actually, I'm going to add, yes. I have it up on the screen for you, but it might be easier. You also have a copy and I keep it with me. That up on the screen, but I, I can't help it. I've got to stand up and go over there and do this. But I promise I'll keep it short. Yeah. Thanks.
Real quickly, the general fund, as the pie chart shows very well, vast majority of the general fund income comes from state grant. I estimated the grant at about eleven million, six hundred fifty-three thousand. If we have forty extra students, that grant will increase by about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that, that could be more revenue. We have a cash balance of a little over two million dollars available at any time. We'll get a little bit of funding for summer school that won't pay for summer school. Rental revenue is our cell towers of about sixty-five thousand dollars. ECA revenue from where we rent the building is small. Occasionally, we get a reimbursement from the state, the grant that's available, the extra money, not unusual. We also have this transfer line, five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. Understand, we have a separate fund where we insure our retirements and our severance. So every year we move, we say if needed to pay for retirement severance, we'll move five hundred thousand dollars. But we haven't had to use that in the last three years. We haven't had to make that transfer. But we have to have it there just in case we have a large retirement. And it is possible, because if you remember the first day of breakfast, when I asked how many of you people are eligible to retire, you saw those hands go up. If they all go, we'll be needing all that money. Where does the money go? We appropriate about seven hun, seven million dollars to, quote, regular classroom instruction, teachers, classroom teachers, the, the subject area teachers. We also put about eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in special area instruction, which does happen to be special education, but also many of the electives and things that we offer. As you can see, we get reimbursed twenty-five thousand dollars. But we spend about sixty thousand dollars in the summer. We would continue to say that's worth it. Every day that new kids come into school, it's a better day for us. It also helps with credit recovery. We put about two hundred and seven thousand dollars into enrichment instruction, which is things like having Spanish program at the junior high school and an immersion or starting program at the elementary school, as well as some of those AP courses that we offer. Student support, counseling services, homeschool advisors, instructional support or teacher assistance. And if we're going to spend another eighty thousand dollars on teacher assistance, that's going to need to go up. So that'll likely go up for next year, and that'll actually reduce some of what's spent some of this cash balance to do that. School administration is about ten percent of our budget. You obviously see what we get for that at our, it's worth it. District administration is about four hundred and forty-four thousand. It's about three percent of the budget. So if you get rid of me, you can reduce that budget pretty quickly through consolidation. Central office staff, you're still going to need, because somebody's got to do the work, paying the bills and receiving the money and the assistant superintendent and things like that. To operate, maintain the district, all of the maintenance, all the things for repair costs is about one point seven million dollars for those employees. We put about thirty thousand dollars in student transportation. Probably the two biggest parts of that that come out of the general fund are we now put a teacher assistant on the bus with our special needs children. And we also do some transportation of kids in summertime programs. But again, we probably will use half of that. When you break it all down, about seventy-eight to seventy-nine percent is going to the school in the general fund. And about twenty-one percent, twenty-two percent is other. The electricity, the bills, the central office administration. And so you have graphic representations. Any questions on general? I, you know, I'll just go through this. And I know that I'm going through this quickly, but this is what, twelve, you know, thirteen percent of you? Here's one that's really key. And I, I won't go through the detail, but the referendum fund. The referendum fund is the exact opposite of the state. This is when the local community contributes three hundred thousand dollars, or three million, three and a half million dollars to Speedway schools to have the opportunities that we have. We do get some excise tax for automobiles, commercial vehicles, banks. We do have a cash balance in that fund that we carry through the fund thing. So you can see what do we use it for? Same things we use it for in the general fund. The big addition here is security services, the school resource officer, as well as all of our extracurriculars come out of that. The key on this page, two things. We promised the community when we asked them to pass this referendum that we would reduce the rate from fifty-four cents. We're taking it down to forty-nine cents, forty-nine point eight nine. We've kept our word this year. And to give you an idea, our homes, about a quarter of our homes are ninety-four thousand dollars or less. That's going to cost people about a hundred and thirty-two dollars a year. The next twenty-five percent are about a hundred and seven thousand dollars. That costs about a hundred and eighty-nine or fifteen a month. Home value of a hundred and twenty is going to cost about eighteen dollars a month. And our most valuable homes of a hundred and forty-five and above, about twenty-four dollars a month is what the referendum costs. It actually costs less today than when we passed it for the first time six years ago. You know, we really have to be honest, business community pays our referendum significantly. Capital Projects Fund, we didn't detail, but quickly, again, property taxes are what pay Capital Projects Fund. That's what keeps the buildings up. What are we going to do with the money? By far, anymore, as, as one would expect in the twenty-first century, is technology. Technology we buy, the technology we update, and the people who do it. So technology software, technology personnel. And if you go down to equipment, one, two, three, a million dollars out of a two million dollar fund, technology. We do transport our special needs children. We do that with the contractor. We think those contracted services might be as high as about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. We get that for a property tax levy that's two cents. Likely to be lower than that because we have a little bit of an excess levy that'll come back. But I'll show you that on the last page. We have eight thousand dollars in unpaid textbook rental. Some years it's been as high as twelve, sometimes four, the textbook rental in the state of Indiana has gone to court. They can't, they have to pay this, the people won't pay it. But the good news is we've got an excess levy more than our ta, I have eight thousand dollars, so this will match. The reality is we have about twenty-four thousand dollars just sitting in excess levy, so we won't have a levy for this. There'll be no tax hit on this. And in fact, the rest of that twenty-four thousand will go to transportation, and I get that too. If, if we spend eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year on the addition at Wheeler, we'll still have a cash balance of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars next year. And if, we would need additional funds for Wheeler or any other place, we appropriate a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So the rainy day fund simply pays for itself. We're more likely not to use a penny of that now. What I'm really looking to do is grow the rainy day fund in case we have to add classrooms at Allison. And again, I can't stress this enough, the whole Wheeler project is already paid for. There is no tax impact here. There's no ten cents on the tax rate for two years. It's paid for just by plan. So what's this add up to? And I, I'll share this with the town council. This is a tax rate history of the school tax. We are consistently the, either the ninth or tenth lowest tax rate in Marion County. Washington Township is below us. Of course, we all know they're up for two referendums in November. If they pass both, they will be below us. But in thirteen, our tax rate was eighty-six cents. We borrowed about nine hundred thousand dollars to put new windows in this building and to put in new electronic controls and new lightings. So the tax rate in fourteen went up to ninety-three cents. Paid off most of the debt that year, went down to eight and nine cents in two thousand fifteen, and that's right here in debt, this eight cents and eight cents. We offset this by going down to Capital Projects and make that lower. This year, again, Capital Projects went down. In sixteen, our rate came in at eight-five forty-nine. That was actually twelve cents lower than we advertised. This year, we're advertising eighty-seven cents. It'll come down about eighty-three cents. It'll, it'll come in eight-three something. I don't have any doubt at all about that. So we will have lowered the tax rate, the overall tax rate, by more than two cents again. It'll actually be lower in two thousand seventeen than it was in two thousand thirteen. Why is that good? That's good because the entire community has tax rates that come together, and the lower the rate, the less the property tax cap impact hit is, which I probably should have shown. Next year, the first thing we're going to do is lose, we show this is spent, but we're going to lose sixty-one thousand dollars to property tax spend laws. Sixty-one thousand dollars is small. You know, there are districts losing sixty million dollars. And then finally, the last page that I always give to you, and, and, and as you know, I do this for the town council for their, their financing, there's a real, this is a real good description of where the money goes to. In general fund, teachers, substitute teachers, educators, teacher assistants. What I like to do on this one is look down to, very specifically, I remember people saying, well, what do you do with this money that the referendum brings in? Pretty simple. All of our kindergarten teachers that go full day, we pay for. All our newbie teachers, all our junior high and senior high teacher aides, all of their salary and benefits. All of our moderate special education teachers have the aides that go there. All of our academic team coaches and our summer school enrichment, all of our teacher aides, our guidance director who gave a report tonight, our homeschool advisors, our graduation coach, our junior high and media specialist librarian, all of the AP testing we do, all of the AP incentive. We pay the principal at newbie, assistant principal at the high school, the junior high assistant principal out of the referendum, pay the school resource officer, and all of the extracurriculars. All of that's possible because essentially, newbie remains the school and junior high remains the school because of the referendum. We don't consolidate down to two or three elementaries and one junior senior high. I know that's- I know that's quicker, but essentially, when you've been through this, there's not a lot of change. This is a budget that balances, we will take in enough funding to pay what's to pay up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And that will be right before our next meeting.
Yes, next Monday night. Nancy Johnson and I are, I think, first ones on, no, a week from Monday, before our next meeting. Yes, because essentially, they have to pass the budget. You all are welcome to come, be in the audience and cheer.
Okay. All right. Item eight is to approve a resolution authorizing the superintendent to reduce the 2016 budget appropriations across all funds as needed.
And one of the things we ask you to do each year, one of the ways we fund next year's budget is by reducing spending this year if need be and reducing appropriations. And so the recommendation is that you approve a resolution to allow the superintendent to work with the budget hearing official, which is the DLGF, to reduce our 2016 spending in the general fund, the referendum fund, exempt operating, our capital projects fund, transportation fund, and rainy day fund, to the extent needed, to allow this budget to go forward. So you're giving us permission to spend less this year so that we can have next year's budget, and I'd recommend you approve this resolution. And if you do, I'm gonna need two copies signed above your name, and the secretary's gonna need to sign twice.
I have a motion. Luke?
I move that we approve the resolution to authorize the superintendent to reduce the 2016 budget appropriations as needed.
Thank you. Tom?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution to authorize the superintendent to reduce the 2016 budget appropriations across all funds as needed. Any comments? All those in favor? Motion carries 4-0. And we have to sign, right?
Yes, as long as you watch carefully the next two people sign. Keep testing the signature, but I would stare carefully. Ms. Box, guard those carefully.
Got it.
Okay, item nine is to approve extended contracts.
And our recommendation is that you approve the extended contract of Joseph Smith for five days, Kevin Burke for five days, Joseph Troyer, I'm sorry, Kevin Burke for a stipend of $2,200, Joseph Troyer for five days, Charles Bennett for five days, and Misty Davenport for five days. In addition, we'd ask that you give us permission to employ two teachers, Mr. Kyle Owen and Mr. Craig Fugate, to teach a zero period at their regular teacher rate of pay. They are teaching a class called the Genius Hour from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. We have students who have chosen to take this as an elective, their attendance is recorded, it is graded, they have to be there. And this is, of course, new to us, and I wish I could describe it better than to explain that these students are working on a real-world application to create an innovation and solve a problem. The neat thing about this is, well, there's very many neat things, but this only works if the students attend, we've got about 15. But likewise, we're actually teaching a similar introductory course at the junior high school inside the school day, but we don't, because that's part of that teacher's regular schedule. So I'd recommend those extensions to teacher contracts for approval.
Want to have a motion?
I move that we extend the contracts as just specified.
Thank you.
Second.
Luke? Thank you. Been moved and seconded that we approve the extended contracts as described. Any comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 4-0.
Mr. President, item 10, I'd ask you to pull from the agenda. We, our agreement is gonna be honored through 2017, so I, you and I have spoken about that. Although we will be looking, we're starting to work on a new agreement for athletic training services for 17 now, because there's a potential for an increase in expense. But they originally asked if we would like to, if we would consider shortening the contract, and I explained to them that we'd already budgeted this year, we needed it for next year. They were good, they're honoring their commitment.
Okay. Item 11 is to appoint a member to the Speedway Parks and Recreation Board.
And my recommendation is that you appoint retired teacher, Mr. Denny Pelly, to complete one year, one year of the term that was created by the exit of teacher Shane Grove. If Mr. Pelly's interested, if he's appointed and is interested, he could express interest in continuing after this year for a full time.
Tom?
I'll move that we appoint Dennis Pelly as a member of the Speedway Parks and Recreation Board as requested by the superintendent.
Thank you. I'll second. Luke?
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded that we appoint Denny Pelly to the Parks and Recreation Board. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 4-0. Okay, item 12 is to appoint a member to the Speedway Public Library Board.
And I would recommend that the board reappoint Mr. Richard Meese to a second term on the board, the director of the library headlin, I'm not sure exactly what her title is. But Darcy has expressed that he's been a wonderful board member, he attends all meetings and represents us well. I personally enjoy my time talking to Mr. Meese, his children have long since been through school, but he has a deep respect, and they're, yeah, both very, very good students.
Tom?
I'll move that we appoint Mr. Richard Meese to a second term on the library board.
Thank you. Laura?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we appoint Richard Meese, reappoint Richard Meese to, for a second term representing schools, to the public library board. All those in favor? Motion carries 4-0. All right, item 13 is acknowledgement of grants received.
I'd recommend, Mr. President, that you accept by consensus $61,590 and 4 cents in grants to Speedway schools.
By consensus? Okay, we'll take those. Item 14 is to approve the request for temporary disability leave of absence.
My recommendation is that you approve this temporary disability leave of absence for, as a paternity leave, actually effective August 2nd and through September 19th, 2016.
Laura?
I move that we approve the request for temporary disability leave of absence for maternity leave.
Tom?
I will second.
Okay, been moved and seconded that we approve the request for temporary disability leave of absence. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 4-0. Item 15, employment recommendations.
And this is a long list, and I'll ask you to bear with me. The first recommendation is because of an injury, we're asking, we're recommending that Ms. Dawn Johnson and Ms. Casey Lindsay exchange positions and exchange their hourly rates of pay that were just approved last month, with Ms. Lindsay going to Allison to operate that cafeteria, and Ms. Johnson, when she returns, she's on a disability leave to work at the high school cafeteria that's listed, we've given you the entire salary list again. We also ask that you create a position, second assistant volleyball coach, this is something that we've discussed with the Teachers Association and run through the athletic department, and looking at the numbers, something that all of us agree upon. This is only possible because it's creating a new position, it's not changing the master contract, it's applying the same rules. So we'd ask you to create that position, we're actually gonna ask that Ms. Jaclyn Disney, or recommend that Ms. Jaclyn Disney, who served as a volunteer in this role, become a paid assistant coach. And then, in addition, you have a new ECA list that has multiple ECA recommendations. All of them have met the criteria, I'm literally gonna go down and read the ones and bring to you on the list. As high school assistant athletic director, we're recommending Mr. Steve Stocker, who comes to us out of retirement, with a great deal of experience. Junior high 8th grade girls' basketball coach, Ms. Jordan DeFur, cheerleader, I think we've already approved Heather Sturgeon, but Ms. Jessica Parker. Patty, you're gonna have to double check if I'm missing anything. On the second page, senior high school assistant football coach, Jonathan Mummer. Volleyball, junior high school, 7th grade coach, Caitlin Long. And in addition, we recommend that Ms. Natalie Owens be retained as a volunteer coach at the junior high school, not retained, but actually allowed to be a volunteer coach. Ms. Box, have I missed any?
No.
Thank you. So those are our personnel recommendations.
Laura?
I'm, I'm, sorry.
Did you do access to start?
Uh, yes, let's see. I move that we accept, or that we approve the stated employment recommendations.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the various appointments that were discussed. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 4-0. Item 16 is recognition of visitors. Are there any other business?
I have no other business. I do want to remind you that we're back together in two weeks, short schedule, to, the key item of business will be the Capital Projects Plan, if you're inclined to approve that. And I'll remind you that on the day before that, Monday night, the 22nd, at 6:30 p.m. I believe, we are doing, I'll get this information to you, this is a presentation for the town council. And I know the largest item of business is I expect to have a quote for property damage personal liability insurance from city securities that night, so, whatever other personal items come out.
Okay, then we'll go sign claims. Thank you.